Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 26th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
One is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Christie, roll call, please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork. Downey.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, move on to approval of the minutes from the September 12th regular meeting and workshop meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next to have approval of the bills is Mr. Morissette.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,536,677.65, subject to the compromise.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, before we move on to public comments, I'd just like to take a minute. We're gonna, I thought we'd have a moment of silence for Manny Candy passed away last Friday, and Manny did, has done a lot for the city. He was on our school board for, I think they said seventeen years. He's been, he was on the city library board. He was big in Boy Scouts, the food shelf. He did a lot for the city, so I thought we could take just a moment of silence. Okay, let's go on, go to the public comments. If anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Yep, come on forward.
My name is Ben Fox, and I live in the town of Troy at 680 County Road MM. A few years ago in 2014, the city, the county, and the town signed agreements to change jurisdictional transfers of County Road MM. As part of this process, it's definitely got complicated, but there are some buildings that the city owns across from me that are annexed into the city that don't have addresses proper to what it should be now, and so it's gonna be a long process, obviously. And the county is currently within its building of the road next to me. I looked it up, since nobody seems to know anything or make a commitment to anything, I looked up the city's policy on street naming. There are several items in here. One of them is that city-initiated renaming of streets, if just cause to be shown that street names would benefit the city from a public safety standpoint, that the city may initiate renaming. County Road Double M, there's two of them in the city of River Falls, one in Pierce County, one in St. Croix, so dispatch may be confused at that. The process for renaming streets, the renaming of existing streets in accordance with the above decision shall first be brought to the city council where their request should either be rejected or forwarded to the planning commission for further consideration. If forwarded by the city council, the planning commission should make a recommendation to the city council regarding the renaming of the subject street, and then a public hearing should be held. I would just be like, you know, it'd be nice to finally know what, because I think there's about twenty to thirty different addresses affected, and a lot of people are kind of wondering what the status is on that, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Okay, anybody else have anything?
I have a quick public comment.
Yep.
Mark this on your calendar. We have two excellent events coming up in River Falls to be an advocate for those in need. I want to remind everyone of the 29th Annual Turning Point Walk to Empower Event here in River Falls, which will be held in Glen Park, so mark your calendars for October 14th. This is an awareness event that is scheduled for 9:00 AM to noon Saturday, October 14th. Turning Point's vision is to end domestic and sexual violence in Pierce and St. Croix counties of Wisconsin. Turning Point provides direct services such as legal services, a safe place for victims of sexual violence and domestic abuse from Pierce and St. Croix counties and the surrounding areas. The family-friendly event will feature light refreshments, games, activities, and sign-making. For more information, you can contact Amy at 715-425-6751, extension number 102. And the second event, and if you want to take your walk to a run, I suggest that you do, you can come Run With the Cops. Run With the Cops is a Wisconsin Special Olympics fundraiser on October 10th, 5:00 to 9:00 PM at the University of Wisconsin River Falls. This is a fun, community-oriented event where local law enforcement has fun games for the community, from kids obstacle courses and the infamous glow-in-the-dark 5K marathon, or the one-mile walk. So, come have fun, walk or run, enjoy our great community. For information on Run With the Cops, contact Karen Kraus, 715-833-0833. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, move on to the consent agenda. First thing on the agenda is acknowledgement of the following minutes. River Falls Housing Authority from 8:09, the Planning Commission from 9:05, the Bid Board from 8:08, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 8:16, and the EMS Advisory Board from 8:17. B is preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703, Wisconsin statute for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. Three is a resolution regarding the 2018 through 2020 agreement with towns for EMS services. This resolution would approve the agreements for EMS services with the towns of River Falls, Kenny Knick and parts of Troy, Clifton, and Pleasant Valley for 2018 through 2020. Next one is a resolution approving final plat of Villas of Sterling Ponds Phase Two. Next one is a resolution approving transit safety policy. This resolution approves the city's safety policy for the River Falls Shared Taxi Service. Anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull numbers two, four, and five.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, entertain a motion on the rest?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve item number one, A through E, and item number three on the consent agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Sean, you had two, four, and five.
Consent agenda item number two, regarding preliminary resolution, Business Improvement District. I have a few questions regarding this, and I'm hoping for a better understanding. I want property owners to know that we will be available for their needs. If people have concerns regarding these assessments, we need to know so we can act accordingly. I like the fact that business improvement districts will improve the business conditions, but will property owners have enough time to voice their concerns if they disagree with the assessment? It reads, "This notice shall be published as a Class 1 notice, and a copy shall be mailed at least ten days before the hearing to every interested party." So my question is, is ten days enough? Where I work, I'm required to ask for two weeks in advance to use PTO, which is a fairly common practice for managers to adopt in schedule changes in a workplace. So I'm curious if there's a better reason why it's ten days, or if there's a better, or if this is a standard practice which actually works fine, or has proven to work.
Class 1 notice is called out in the statutes, so that's what, it's, that's the function of the statutes of the state.
The ten days is also in the statutes, I believe. We do try to spread the initial resolution in the public hearing out, like we probably could have had it at our next meeting, but we're gonna have the public hearing on the 24th, just for that reason, to give people time, October 24th, give people time to review that information.
So, we do have plenty of time in that respect?
I believe we do. We, you know, we could always give it more time, but I think a month is usually adequate. And we usually don't have any questions if people have been in the program for a while. If they're not a new property owner, they usually know what it's about.
So, we're, so it says mailed at least ten days, but we're well ahead of that, then? Okay, good. All right. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Consent Agenda Item Number Two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number four?
For Consent Agenda Item Number Four, Resolution Regarding Final Plat of Villas of Sterling Pond Phase Two, I read that the developer will be required to submit a letter of credit per the original developer's agreement. The final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat approved in 2003 and renewed in spring of 2017. My question is, do we already have the letter of credit on file? I'm not familiar with the process. When does this happen? Does the council have access to it? Will it be available to look at? I would like to know.
Good evening. Matt Heeb with ACA, representing the developer. The letter of credit needs to be in place before the final plat is signed by the city, so the city has not received the final plat, or I mean, the letter of credit, but that will be in place prior to the city signing the actual final plat. And it's available for the city in case the developer does not follow through on improvements or warranty issues or anything like that.
Is this normal practice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Consent Agenda Item Number Four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number five?
Consent Agenda Item Number Five, Resolution Regarding Approving Transit Safety Policy. I have three questions regarding this. We know good safety policy is not only empowers and protects our city's workers, but also the community as a whole. Essentially, how will this safety policy be used? Is this something that people sign, that they agree to follow to the best of their ability when they work for the city?
This safety policy is specifically for the River Falls Ride Share Program. It's required under the grant agreements. I'm not sure that we had one before, but we just recently had an audit review with the FTA personnel and people from Department of Transportation in Wisconsin. And this is one of the items they said that we should have updated, so that's why it's here for your review. It's not specifically for River Falls employees because we contract for that service.
Okay, and I haven't taken a hard look at the share rides cars lately, but is there a number of people, people can call that's located visually on the share ride cars that include the phrase, "How is my driving?" in relation to the safety standards?
You're asking if there's something on the cars?
Yeah.
I don't think so, but I haven't looked either.
Okay, that's something we can look into, I suppose. All right, well, thank you for answering my questions.
I'd like to just comment on that if I can. I've seen them driving around the community, particularly in my neighborhood, and I've never had a safety complaint or concern from anyone in my neighborhood regarding the ride-share drivers.
One of my, one of my questions to staff prior to the meeting was, you know, did this, have we got a history of, of safety issues? And there are none. I think this is just a compliance piece that's, that's important, but again, as Julie said, they're vendors to the city. They're not really city employees. It's, it's something we rely on them to do the right thing, and they're a very reputable firm out of La Crosse, and we've had nothing but good luck with them, so I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Consent Agenda Item Number Five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, ordinance's resolutions. Resolution on the release Right-of-Way easement in favor of City River Falls, the alley between Broadway Street and East Park Street. This resolution, oh, I'm sorry, the, the public hearing will be set for the discontinuing of the undeveloped alley right of way. We're not sure when that'll be yet, the public hearing, but, so this will be soon, in October?
November 14th.
November 14th, okay, okay.
That's the recommendation.
Okay. So anyways, I'm looking for a...
This is a first reading, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a first reading, I'm sorry, geez. So, does any council members have any questions about this?
No, this, this isn't a first reading. We would like, request action on the resolution.
Oh.
Originally, it was an ordinance, so we got kind of off-kilter with that.
Oh.
So if you feel that you can pass that, that would be good.
I just want to ask a clarifying question on that. Are we okay, City Attorney, to go ahead and do that, because it is marked first reading?
I, I think that's... Excuse me, I think that's fine. It's, it's a resolution, not an ordinance, and it's just an error in the agenda, but I don't think it's anything clerical.
Excellent. I move for the approval of number six, Resolution to Release Right-of-Way Easement in favor of City River Falls, alley between Broadway Street and East Park Street.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See, that's where I got confused on mine. It doesn't say first reading.
No. I have two copies, and one says one, and one says the other.
Sorry about that. Okay, next one is Resolution Approving Development Agreement with Eagle Storage. This resolution will approve the developer's agreement, and Scott has something he'd like to talk to us about first.
Best way is with a visual aid, I think. So, what the council has in front of it is a developer's agreement with SAL, which is the parent, so to speak, or the developer for the Eagle Storage Development. That's at the corner of what is now Hoopert Street and Arrow Court, so it'd be just down from Arrow Building, and then there's what the building called Hillside Plaza. People know it as a bunch of different names, the Farm Credit Building, the Nuclear Building, the, I'm not sure what else they know it by around here, but Hillside Plaza. And then this is the property on the corner. There's a long history of the property. I'm happy to try to fill you in on it if you have interest in it, but essentially, the property is originally developed in the town. Then it was annexed into the city. City services were extended. There was some additions or modifications to the building. There was a development plan for essentially commercial condos, or commercial office condominiums. There was some development activity on the site related to that, which included site preparation, including this yellow private water line that's, that's illustrated, and that, it's hard to understand why the line is that way, but it's based on the development plan, and there was a parking lot and other things that that kind of followed along through. And that was intended to serve the entire site. It was under one ownership, one large ownership. It was all together. There was a series of fire hydrants planned to provide fire service to, to both the Hillside Plaza Building and these new condos. Eventually, the development did not proceed. The bank ended up with the property. There was a sale of the property, but only part of the property with the Hillside Plaza Building. There is not recorded easements for the private water main that serves both, both properties, including the fire service hydrant for the Hillside Plaza Building, this one up here in the, in the corner. During the development of the Eagle Storage process, the site work discovered that there's the water line there, which wasn't disclosed in title work or other surveys previously. There was a lot of back-and-forth amongst all the prop, parties. All the parties include the owners, the owner of Hillside Plaza, the bank, which owns the property, the vacant property, which is in the process of selling it to SAL, and of course, the city, because we're always pointed at for some, as the reason that these things occurred in the first place. I took it upon myself to meet, to convene all four parties together to see if we could find a way forward. And the way forward was a four-party agreement. Yours just seeing the, the part that's between us and the SAL, but there, the bank was involved in reducing the purchase price. SAL, and this development agreement is agreeing to reconstruct private water main on his neighbor's property in order to resolve that issue. The neighbor is agreeing to take over responsibility for that as a private water main, and the city is contributing, or the proposal is the city to contribute $12,000 to SAL, which is a little more than half of the cost to do the work in conjunction with other work that they're doing for the site. Originally, it's a long story. Originally, the city looked at just doing the project separately ourselves as a utility project. Our estimates were between $10,000 and $20,000. I think we ended up in the $12,000 to $14,000 range. We were ready to proceed with that as a separate project and tell the owners they're on their own. We're just gonna do our thing, but we eventually were able to agree to this. So, I'm happy to, to answer questions. This is kind of a test case, will you, for the council, for me to have a little bit better understanding of what kind of problem solving you'd like me to try to enter into. There was some administrative ability, I believe, for me to, to do this without council action, but I, I felt it was important for us to bring it forward. So you do have, you certainly have the ability not to approve the developer's agreement. I'm asking you to do so, and then perhaps provide me some feedback on whether you'd like me to try to do this kind of creative problem solving in the future, or if you prefer that we first come to the planning commission, council, or somebody else to, to do that.
I have a question.
Yep.
Right at the end, Scott, I think I heard you say that this was something that we were probably gonna have to tackle anyway. Was there always gonna be a $12,000 plus or minus expense on our behalf?
Well, I think we could have taken a hard line and said, "We're not gonna do anything," and sent a letter to the property owners telling them that they had some responsibility. I think they certainly had some, some ability to say it wasn't their responsibility, and then, of course, that always heads us towards litigation typically. I don't think we had a huge risk in that, but I, I think we felt all along, well, let me phrase it this way. There was a fair amount of staff, we had a number of staff kind of convening so that I wasn't just making my own decision on what to do, and I think there was a majority that felt we had some responsibility to try to get this figured out. We've been collecting hydrant rental fees from the Hillside Plaza owner for years for the, for the maintenance of that hydrant system, so we've been collecting revenue to provide that service. If the private, if the owner decided because there was no easements, they were just gonna yank out the water system, that we still have this problem of, you know, we're billing this person for a service. We could either discontinue that, but then likely have a fire, fire code issue where we have to send a letter to the owner saying, "You gotta rebuild the system." So I don't want to make it seem like we had to do this. I don't think we had to, but I think we felt it was our appropriate response, and we felt, I certainly felt the money that we're putting in is equivalent to what we probably would have spent if we were gonna independently try to solve this our own. But I would tell you, that's not, there's not consensus on staff that that was the right way to go. I mean, there was some thought on staff that this is a private matter between two private property owners, and if we get drawn into it, then we'll deal with it then, meaning if we get sued, or somebody decides that we have some responsibility, then we get involved. I chose to be a little more proactive.
Can you give a little, kind of clarification for the folks at home, exactly what are we doing with that line?
So this line, what's shown in yellow would be removed. It's, it is impeding any kind of reasonable development of the property. You'd have to go back to a kind of a serpentine road system and some very odd-shaped buildings to get to work. But anyways, we've got the Eagle Storage property. If I can borrow your pen. There is significant shared stormwater between this. Now, that's a whole nother thing that had to be resolved, and in that case, the city took no participation in it. We didn't offer to participate financially or otherwise. We just emphasized that the owners had to make sure that at the end of the project, we had stormwater that worked for, for everybody, and they were able to do that on their own. But that includes significant stormwater work, basically on the property line, significant amount actually on the Hillside Plaza property. And so as part of that stormwater work and getting all those systems to work, the line would essentially extend straight from Arrow Court, straight to, let's see, that's kind of north, mostly north. I don't think it's due north, but basically north to the existing location of the hydrant. That's about 300 feet of eight-inch water main, so it's a pretty significant, pretty significant system there. The thought is that that eight-inch is there to allow for future expansion of the Hillside Plaza Building.
Just to follow up with what I, reason I had clarify, clarity on that, I don't have any problem with staff, as long as you're involved as, as the administrator, working deals like this out in the best interest of all parties. I think it's in the best interest of the city to try to minimize the red tape for people that want to do business here, want to live here, do all of that. That being said, I think we just, we need, there's a fine line there, right? We want to make sure that we're, we're going through the proper checks and balances, and this, I think we did just fine.
Yeah, I think, the small investment we're gonna end up making out there anyways, it's well worth it to finally get some development out there, and get something put up out there that's gonna look nice, and, and I think that's what we expect out of you, to do stuff like that, like, like Mr. Gagne had said, to cut the red tape for the people trying to build out there. So, I have absolutely no problem with you taking stuff like that on, as long as you let us know what's happening.
Quick question. Are, the, the removal of the existing private line, then, is that on the developer?
Yes, so we're not participating in that, that cost either. And they'll have to do that, and they'll have to abandon that within the state codes, because obviously, it's connected to our public system. So, there's significant costs there for them to do that, but...
And does that line extend up into the property to the north?
It does not.
Okay, it just kind of stops at the end there. It looked like maybe there was another lateral going, or another...
There, there's a...
Dub.
There was a hydrant plan for that.
Okay.
With this, with this system, but there is not, that property just north of there is a residential property in the town of Troy.
Okay.
It doesn't have city services.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Scott?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that, then.
To make a motion, we approve the resolution approving development agreement with Eagle Storage.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the next one is Resolution Approving the Annexation Partition.
Petition.
Or petition, sorry, not partition, petition. And there again, Scott will go, go through this.
It's okay, I'll just stand here again if I can get myself organized. So, the council's well aware of ongoing legal issue with the town of Troy. They're contesting our annexation of the 291 acres of land that we own at the western edge of the city of River Falls. Attach as a resolution is kind of a next step in our process. We've, the council has discussed this on numerous occasions in closed session, whereby we've been represented by an attorney and, and receiving his counsel. One of the pieces of advice that we were given is to pursue if other landowners were, were willing, which we understood they were, including the school district, to annex property to proceed with the unanimous petition. So this is a, the city's portion. The two private landowners have indicated an interest in annexation and have initiated by signature the, the petition signing. This would be, the next step would be the city signing it as, as a property owner. So you'd be taking this action as the owner of the property, and then the, the school district would be the fourth owner of the property. The school district did have a meeting, and I haven't had a chance to provide a summary in writing to the council as it was last night. The school board, in summary, I believe it was a five-zero vote with one abstention to approve annexation and proceeding with, to have the superintendent proceed with the annexation petition and action. Now, they did stipulate in their resolution something to the effect of it wouldn't be effective until the trial date had passed. Trial is set for November 20th to 22nd. It was implied in the comments by the staff and, and school board members that they were not expecting to wait or be delayed by appeals or other actions, that they were just waiting until this initial court case, and that there wasn't scheduled to come back to the school board, that they are authorizing the superintendent to take this action without further, further action by the school board. So, I would anticipate the city, if they approve the petition, putting our name on the petition... Um, so I would anticipate the city, if they approve the petition, putting our name on the petition, then I will enter into those discussions with the superintendent as the superintendent was instructed to enter in those discussions with us. And we'll try to identify how to um, honor the wishes of the school board that they expressed to both annex, but also wait. Um, that likely will result in us not, probably, we will probably agree with, uh, agree um, to wait for the ordinance part of the annexation until after that date to honor the wishes of the school board. But I'll have to wait and get some feedback from the superintendent on exactly how they want to, um, to proceed. So I, I don't think there's any, there is no hesitation in us recommending proceeding based on the action last night. I don't see, I did ask for clarification from the school board if they expected us to start over. Because we had um, transmitted the petition with the two signatures and indicated our, our uh, um, expectation that the council would take this up tonight. Um, and they did not indicate that we should be starting over. The, the main concern was that um, they wanted to wait for any final action until after the, the court date. So um, I guess that's the best summary I can give of last night. The mayor was in attendance. Uh, council member Marsette did come also. They might have something to add. But I think I tried to summarize what happened. And so, again, annexations in Wisconsin are initiated by property owners. So this is not the city government annexing, um, taking property from the town of Troy. This is the city of River Falls as a property owner with other property owners petitioning the city government to annex their property from the town of Troy to the city of River Falls uh, for jurisdictional purposes. So that's the action that you'd be asked. This is not, um, obviously, it's an act of the council as a property owner, but it's not, this doesn't uh, finalize any annexation. There still has to be um, a signature from the school board. And then an ordinance, and there in between the signatures and the ordinance has to be a review by the state of Wisconsin. And then obviously, the ordinance um, will have uh, at least one reading, but likely two readings um, to do that. And I'm sorry, I don't know exactly. I don't know if Dan knows, but I think it's probably a first and second reading of the ordinance before it's adopted. Um, so there's a couple more steps here before, before that property would be um, added to the city. So I'd be happy to take any questions. There is a map also attached as the signatures of the other two property owners. Um, essentially, this annexation would include land from De Sanctus Park, Dry Run Road, um, to the, to the current um, city annexed property. Um, that's east of Man, Mann Road or what will become County U.
Okay, anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this then. Thanks, Scott.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I um, move that we approve the resolution approving the annexation petition.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, uh, next we have the administrative report. Scott's got anything for us, or anybody got any questions for Scott? No, I know.
Oh, yeah, my uh, report again. Um, enjoyed the fire ho, fire department open house uh, last night. It was well attended and the weather per, uh, cooperated. So we made it in under the, under the rain. So that was good. Yeah, glad to see many of the council there. Um, very proud, obviously, as the council is to be associated with the, with the department. Um, um, they, they looked sharp. They were acting, um, acting sharp. It was a, a good event all the way around. Um, we do have, um, I do wanna remind the public and help get them ready for a three-and-a-half-day event around the Kinney Corridor planning process. During those three-and-a-half days from October twenty-fifth through October twenty-eighth, um, we start at six PM on October twenty-fifth, and we'll conclude at seven PM on October twenty-eighth. There is numerous opportunities throughout those three-and-a-half days for the public to participate. In addition to the um, opportunities they already have to participate throughout this process. So they always can send emails um, or correspond with us in a method that they choose to do, whether that's mail or Facebook messages or other things uh, related to their, their wishes and dreams for the, the Kinney Corridor. But we would especially invite the public to see if they have an opportunity to come and participate in this design charrette um, where they can get their hands, um, I don't know if they'll get them dirty, but they might get some marker or other things on them um, while they're doing it. And it'd be an opportunity for them to really hands-on participate in the process. Um, so the uh, the charrette is intended to help us um, create a vision in writing or what could actually be implemented um, for the Kinney Corridor. Um, the Kinney Corridor um, committee, and I'll be presenting probably an agenda item at the next um, meeting for the council, where they'll be discussing if you're okay with the, the, the way they would like to proceed. So they've, um, there's loosely been five options or alternatives that have been discussed since the original TRC report um, to the council. Um, that included um, a Kinney Corridor that retained both um, dams and also both hydro electrics. A Kinney Corridor plan that uh, retained both dams, but, but did not retain the hydros. There was an option that uh, removed both the dams and the hydro. And then there was an option that removed one dam and one hydro, um, which kind of became a one or a four A and B, which then eventually came four and five. So it was kind of the upper and the lower um, dam and how we do that. Um, the, the corridor planning committee is, is gonna be asking the council to narrow that down to three choices that they think there's uh, reasonable consensus on essentially two dams with hydros, no dams with no hydros, um, and retaining a dam with, at the upper, um, and the upper hydro and removing the lower uh, dam and lower hydro. So that's likely to be, um, unless the council has objection to that, that's likely to be the three scenarios that the designers and planners work with the public on trying to come up with, with uh, three variations of the Kinney Corridor based on that. And obviously, there'll be shared characteristics among all three of those options. Um, and then there'll be opportunities for divergence of ideas on, on different options. But October twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, um, we'll be seeing a lot more between now and then. Um, we will, we will accommodate as many people as come. We'll have to figure that out as we go. Um, but we're obviously expecting that we'll, we'll get good crowds as we've had for the, the tech talks. Um, fall cleanup for city residents is Monday through Friday, October sixteenth uh, through the twentieth. It's four. Eight, I'm sorry, it's um, Monday through Saturday. It's four to eight, Monday through Friday, and on Saturday, it's eight to one um, at the City Public Works Garage. Um, there has been a couple clarifications on whether or not um, out-of-city residents or, or folks that don't participate in our um, residential curbside uh, could participate. Um, and this, this event is for city residents that participate in our residential curbside collection. Um, and uh, we're gonna be talking as a staff to kind of see if we intended to exclude the commercial, kind of larger commercial accounts, um, that get separate garbage service. Because there's a fee on your um, utility bill for the residential curbside. Those people are paying an additional slight, or have in the past paid a small fee for um, these events. So we'll be, we'll be working through that, but uh, we rarely turn people away.
Clarification on, on the, the best week in the city, I think. My chance to throw stuff away and my wife doesn't catch me. Um, last year, we did, I believe it was in the fall, maybe it was in the spring, doesn't matter. We uh, we had a TV or uh, electronics donation as well. And I know that was highly successful. In fact, I think we were a little bit oversubscribed there, so to speak. Are we expecting to do that again, or is that gonna fall into the twenty-five dollars per item?
I, I think we're expecting to do that type of event again. We're not sure we can handle it uh, every spring and fall. So it's not scheduled for the fall.
Okay.
So this cleanup will not include electronics um, for free.
Yeah.
You can bring electronics to the fall cleanup event, but there's a fee for them.
Yeah.
Um, and so we'll have, we're gonna keep considering that. The, the event was um, very successful.
Yeah.
So um, if volume was our goal, we uh, exceeded our goal for volume. Um, it was a fairly costly event, um, but it was a service we wanted to provide to people. And we think also to, um, I guess, the earth, because it was making sure that those items got properly disposed of. So um, that's uh, something we'll continue to think about doing. And it'll be a policy decision likely for the council if they wanna include that in the fee. Um, because we certainly will be able to estimate kind of what we think the impact will be. Although, we're not sure if we'll always have that much, meaning people always get more devices, so they'll always be. Or if it was kind of a, we haven't looked in our basements in a long time and we're finally gonna get rid of those TVs event. Because it, I mean, we really, um, I think we got a TV from every household in River Falls.
Well, I happen to have one right now that I need to get rid of, so.
And we might've got more than one from every establishment, uh, commercial establishment in town. So it was, it was a pretty, pretty good event. Long, a long way of saying, we, we want to do it again, but it's pretty costly. We'll have to think about um, how we do it.
Okay.
Congratulations. To, I think, to the Alina Clinic grand opening that we had on Saturday. Um, it was a well-attended event and I was able to attend. I think um, council member Downing was there. I know you were there. Am I missing anybody when I answer? But new clinic in town is always good, good for the, good for the community.
Yep.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could, could you review the three likely options from, that you're expecting from the charrette stuff?
Sure.
The, the three, the three things that uh, I've still gotta figure out how to write them up essentially are, um, retain both dams within the corridor with, with both operating hydros. Don't retain the two dams, um, which would include obviously not having hydroelectric at either one. And then the committee has come to some kind of consensus that if we were gonna keep one, um, one dam, we would wanna keep the hydro with it. Um, it wouldn't make, in the committee's mind, it wouldn't make sense to abandon the hydro if we have the structure of the dam. And if we were going to abandon only one of the, the dams and hydros, it would be the lower, not the upper. That's based on a lot of things they've discussed about the condition of the dams and the uh, hydros and the impact on the, the uh, use of property and things like that. Essentially, I think the thinking is that Lake George is a, a higher value recreational asset than Lake Louise is. Um, if they keep, keep an impoundment, that would be the one to keep. Um, so you're welcome to look at the minutes of the group. They've had, been having some discussion. Uh, it's taken a while to get to that. And I think there was some hesitation to narrow the, narrow it down to three specific options. But I, I also think that they're finding there's some fatigue amongst the community in trying to figure out exactly what we're up to and what are their options. Um, because there's obviously more than five options. There's more than the three. There's all kinds of combinations of things that um, um, people are having a hard time getting their hands around. So we wanna try to help them get, get their hands around those options.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Scott? Otherwise, we'll move on to the comptroller's report.
Um, this is the comptroller's report for August twenty seventeen. General fund revenues through August were six million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, or sixty-six percent of budgeted. This compares with six million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars at the same time last year. August revenues include the August tax settlements of one million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Expenditures through August were five million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, compared with five million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seven, thirty-seven dollars a year ago. Spending is still consistent with prior years at fifty-nine percent of budgeted amounts. Net of revenues over expenditures at the end of August is a surplus of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Thanks, Diane. And I have a couple of appointments I'd like to get appointed. Uh, first, I'd like to reappoint uh, Michael Pepin to the bid board through December of two thousand and twenty. And I'd like to uh, reappoint Gary Horvath through October of two thousand and twenty to the Board of Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of both.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next, we will re, we will recess in the closed session per Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eighty-five one G for the following purposes: Conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit, the town of Troy versus the city of River Falls.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We move into closed session.
Second.
Christie, can I have a roll, oop.
Mr. Mayor, can I recommend we move to the um, executive session to the Foster Room?
Sure, we can move to Foster Room. Christie, can I have a roll call, please?
Odine.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Marsette.
Yep.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Beerset.
Yes.
We are in closed session.